Meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for June 23rd. And I'm gonna, do you think I need to do it at the other open session about the? I'll do it at the second piece. So we're gonna move immediately into executive session to conduct a grievance hearing required by a collective bargaining agreement with FEA units A, B, C, and D. It's expected the school committee will then return to open session for the remainder of the meeting. It's a roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes. Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cantolopoulos, yes.
Terry?
Terry Maderas, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And also a yes, we'll log off and then we'll be back for the rest of the open session.
Where do we find out of the?
We will reconvene the open session. Thank you to anybody who has joined us for waiting for us. We were in executive session and it ran a few minutes over. So we'll reopen the meeting per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The public is not allowed to join physically the school committee meeting, but the meeting can be viewed live on our Zoom stream and also on Channel 14. And then a recording of the meeting will be available at our YouTube channel. I also remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the session to notify me as chair and I'll inform the public as required by the open meeting law. Do we have anybody that's gonna be reporting? How do I get? Um, okay. And then next, we'll start with our public comment. Is there anyone that has any public comment for tonight, limited to two minutes and not about items that are on our agenda? Do we have, can somebody remind me how to be able to see every, all the people that are?
There it is. The participants.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, we do have someone that would like to speak.
And so who has to do that?
I can do it for you.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then before you speak, if you could just tell us who you are so that we have your name for the record?
Okay. All right, can you hear me?
We can, thanks.
Okay, great. My name is Veronique Mario. Do you want me to spell it for you?
Oh, actually, no, it popped up on the screen. We're good.
Okay, awesome.
And so did you have some public comment for us for this evening?
Yes, I did. So I had written a kind of open letter to the schools addressing a concern that I had, and I emailed it to pretty much every email that I could find today.
We got it.
Yeah, I just wanted to read it aloud and make it, make it a statement at the meeting.
Right, go ahead.
All right, um, let me just pull it up. Okay, so to whom it may concern, my name is Veronique Mario and my son Sebastian Stewart is just finishing first grade at North Falmouth Elementary. I felt the need to reach out in response to what I strongly feel is an insufficient response on the school's behalf to the protests, police brutality, and information that has become mainstream regarding the treatment of black people in the United States. I understand it can be daunting to figure out how to address race and inequality, especially when we live in a vastly white community. But this discomfort only shows how urgent and imperative these conversations are. We are undergoing much change, and as educators, I feel there is a responsibility on the behalf of our youth, our community, and our future to stand up for justice. I can only hope that there are plans being created for better representation amongst staff and curriculum for next year. That, however, does not excuse the lack of direct response to these not political but human rights issues. Cape Cod has never been as diverse as it is now, and there is no more time to waste delicately expressing condolences while dancing around the issues at hand. My sons, both of my sons are black, and I am saddened to send him to a school every day where the only black employee is the janitor. What message does that send? I am uncomfortable sending him to a school that has not made an attempt to talk to the children about all that they are directly or indirectly exposed to on the news and social media. I am uncomfortable sending him to a school every day that is not actively supporting black people nor making an effort, not just during Black History Month, but all year long, to directly educate its students on race, diversity, social justice, and the privilege we as white people have in this country. I have talked to parents with children in schools in New York City, in Boston, and Natick, Massachusetts, and all of those schools have found ways to age appropriately address the protesting and police brutality events on the news. So what is stopping us in Falmouth? Are we so privileged that we think this does not apply to us as well? This is not an issue that happens in larger cities or somewhere else. White privilege and racism rear their ugly heads on Cape Cod every day. I have witnessed this firsthand over and over again. We cannot expect white parents raised within the comforts of their privilege to wake up with the understanding, tools, language, and skills to effectively, without bias, educate their children on what is happening now and the deeply racist roots that are insidiously intertwined with American history. I am well aware that many of us are just waking up to the ugly truth of being black in America. And it doesn't, and it may be overwhelming, but as educators, this is your time to shine. There is no doubt in my mind that children have been hearing the news and overhearing parents' talk. There's so much information available. It is unsettling that the school has chosen the privileged path of vaguely addressing other events, to quote the June newsletter. It is a privilege to teach our children about racism rather than have them experience it. So let us treat it that way. We have the privilege and the opportunity to begin the liberating work of empowering our students with truth, awareness, and compassion for all of humankind, not just those who look like us. Falmouth Public Schools have an opportunity to lead this imperative conversations and also to provide support and tools for parents who I'm sure are already overwhelmed. We may be uncomfortable, we may make mistakes, and there will certainly be room for improvement, but doing nothing is unacceptable. Please think about the discomfort our black and brown minority students feel when they are day after day the only non-white person in the classroom. Please think about what example it sets when there are no teachers that look like them. Please think about what example it sets when they are not represented in books, media, or learning materials. And please think about what example it sets when their reality and their family members and their safety is so greatly affected and threatened by racism and systemic oppression in America, and their school fails to acknowledge this or educate students otherwise. As a lifelong member of this town and as a white mother of two mixed-race children, I am well aware that their experience is not the same as mine. Let us not wait for a gross example of racism in our community to take action, and let us not pretend that we are doing okay, but let us strive to do better and to set an example. Let us find our place on the forefront of raising a socially aware, supported, and represented next generation who are educated on the egregious places from which we have come and actively learning how to change the future. I look forward to hearing your response and conscious plan of action for the upcoming school season. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sending the email earlier today and then taking the additional time to join us tonight. If you haven't been part of our meetings before, then you might not know that we don't engage in dialogue around public comment, but it may appear on a future agenda just so that we keep our, following our rules according to the open meeting law. So don't think that our silence now means anything. It just means we're offering our own roles.
Yes, thank you.
You so much. Do we have anyone else that has public comment for tonight?
No, we do not have anyone else that has requested.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is an update from the superintendent. So you've noticed we've moved this to the top so that any members of the public that might want to hear what's going on in the crazy world that we're in don't have to wait till the end of the meeting. Lori?
Did you want to hear the mission statement?
Oh, my gosh, I forgot.
I wouldn't have interrupted it, but it took me a while to find my copy, so.
Yes, let's do it, since you hunted it down. I completely forgot.
The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experience. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. The FPS Falmouth Public Schools vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve in problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. I never used to do that when I was chair before, so I'm gonna take, it's gonna take some reminding to get me used to it. Sorry. Lori, an update?
All right, thank you. First, I would like to recognize Chief Small from the Falmouth Fire Department. He is retiring at the end of the month. And I just, we have been so supported by the town and certainly from the Fire Department. We have many representatives on many of our teams, and I just appreciate the collaboration and the leadership. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Chief Small, and I wish him well in his retirement and all of his future endeavors. I was hoping tonight that I would be able to give an update on reopening schools. We have been waiting for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education DSS guidance. We have not received guidance as of yet. We are still hoping that it may come later this week. But the, but while we're waiting, we have been very busy. The parent and staff advisory committee are very active, and they are looking at other states' plans and finding ways that other states have looked at responding to COVID and the possibility of reopening. We're also looking at other countries because other countries have already opened up and to see how things are going. And that has actually led to a lot of the science that we're reading about, that schools now are not thought of as being those centers of the actual coronavirus spread. And the children themselves, according to the science, are not the super-spreaders or even the same level of spreaders that adults are. So we're all very hopeful that all this science and the positive news that we're getting from some of the other countries, that our own guidance when it comes, that we are going to have possibly expanded options. And so we are working on several plans. We know that earlier guidance had indicated that for the summer school, that perhaps tend to a classroom for one to two adults, six feet apart, wearing masks was the guidance earlier, that we are continuing to see how we can look for space and for staffing if that happens to be the guidance. Anywhere from that to if this new, the new science indicates that we may have, be able to have more students in a classroom, or following certain rules that we might not have, that we would be able to have more students back, because that is our hope. The advisory committee has made it very clear that that is their number one priority of getting as many students in, and that's all students, not just elementary students, but students certainly through Lawrence and the high school. It's important, you know, that we have at least part of the time. We'd like to have them all the time, but at least part of time. So we're looking at hybrid models. We're looking at what would it look like if all of our students came back? And so we want to be prepared when we do receive that guidance. So I just want you as a school committee and the community to know that we are looking and have several different plans. Our administrators in the buildings are setting up model classrooms of different varying sizes with desks to see what that looks like. And so we are, we are working hard. We've also created a survey for our parents that the advisory committee has vetted, and they are going to actually take it first for us to see, you know, that everything goes well, we're really getting back the information that we want. But type of things on the survey we'll be asking for is if a family would prefer the model that's going to come out, which is why we can't send a survey out until we know what the model's going to be from the state, or if they still prefer 100% remote learning. Whether transportation, we know, we don't know what the rules are going to be for transportation, but we've heard from several families that they would be happy to transport their children next year if that helps us with the bus transportation. So asking that question, if it were to be a hybrid, we would want to know if the children still would like to receive meals on the weeks that they might not be in or the days they might not be in. So there's all type of questions. We'll ask whether childcare is a concern. So basically, the, you know, we have a survey ready. What we really need in certain survey is what the state recommended model is. And I think that will help inform parents as to whether they feel comfortable sending them in and whatever that model is, following all the safety protocols that the state's gonna have in place, or if they want to remain on 100% remote. So as soon as we get that guidance, we're pretty much ready to move forward with that and to gather information. So I do ask that everybody make sure that they have their updated contact information with the schools because we will be continuing to provide communications all through the summer as we watch this and get guidance from the state. So I wish I had more definites for you at this time, but we're, we're looking at everything. So I just, before I turn over to Sonya, because I want her to share some recognitions with everybody, I just, I just want to say that this is our last week of school, and it's a very unusual last week of school for sure. I'm so proud of all of our families and being partners with us during these difficult and challenging times, and to all of our staff that has really gone above and beyond to try to be connected with students and to be able to have some wonderful send-off for our students this week. We're gonna miss our Clippers, and we just hope everyone enjoys their summer. We, we will have this, we will have whatever school's going to bring us when we come back, we will be ready for, and we will be ready to welcome our Clippers back. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Does anybody have any questions? Actually, Sonya, why don't you go ahead in case the questions are overlapping?
Sure, thank you, Gilly. This afternoon, Madame Susan Smith at Falmouth High School recognized seven graduating seniors who earned the seal of biliteracy. So they had a little Zoom award ceremony, but I also wanted to share with you their names and let you know in which language they earned their honor. So Catherine Brody earned it for Spanish, Michaela Chalifeau for French, Molly Lebrun also for French, James Marathus for French, Caitlin McKay for Spanish, Celeste Newman for French, and Lindsay Olivera for Spanish. So the students found an alternative way to complete the stamp assessment in their home, and they're being recognized for their seal of biliteracy, both in English and the language they studied while they were with the Falmouth Public Schools up through their senior year. And then we have a couple of other honors that came to us this week. So on Friday evening, we recognized students and staff for the first time. We had a category for staff who earned honors in quills and quotes. And you can see by some of the titles that some of them certainly spoke to the period of time that people have been in their homes and isolation and coronavirus. I'm gonna go ahead and scroll up. We have a couple of students who are second or third-time winners with us in quills and quotes. And Group E is our staff group. So that's a brand-new group that we introduced this year. So in lieu of having scheduled a featured poet to speak, we invited our five staff winners to read their poems. And the opportunity aired Friday night at 6:00, but it's able to be replayed via YouTube, and it's replaying on Channel 14. And I just want to also say thank you to Eight Cousins in Highfield for helping us to keep the tradition alive and provide very similar awards to our students. And finally, it was, it was a big week for language and for writing. One of our quills and quotes winners, Penelope Heslop, also found out that she won an award through the Martha's Junior Cooperative Bank Essay Contest, as did Greta Smeltzer, who placed first in the competition. Both Penelope and Greta are fifth-grade students in Mrs. Lynn Buscher's class. So it's been quite a week of honors, and we're very excited for our Clippers, and we wish them all congratulations, and we wanted to be able to share them with you. So thank you for that opportunity.
Terry wants to say something about French.
You know, you're not supposed to put forth your own agendas as a school committee. However, facts are facts. The enrollment in French isn't as much as Spanish, but look at how many awards they got. No, Sue does an amazing job, and I want to, I don't know if you all were aware that they also had the induction ceremony, so kudos to them for, you know, plugging along despite not being in school.
Absolutely. That's wonderful. Absolutely wonderful. Were there any questions for Sonya or for Lori? And I'm sure that if you're looking for more, a bigger data set for your school survey pilot, you can send it to all of us, because a lot of us are gonna be in the pool eventually. Okay. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the fiscal year end on the budget.
Oh, there we go. There we go. How long? Can you hear me now?
We can.
Beautiful, beautiful. So if you can bear with me for a couple of minutes, I, unlike my usually very brief updates, I've typed out about a page and a half. And what I'm trying to do is, this is a very strange year, obviously, and I'm trying to be preemptive in addressing any kind of questions that folks might have. But as I always state at the beginning or ending of any of my updates, if anyone has any questions or confusion, please, please reach out to me and we can chat about it privately, one-on-one, anytime, anywhere you want. So, as of last night's town meeting, the school committee's fiscal year '21 budget has been approved. It's a big deal. We are very fortunate the town of Falmouth is in a position to support the school department and other departmental budgets for fiscal year '21. We do recognize that state and local revenue estimates are extremely volatile right now. The town's capacity to leverage savings during these tough economic times is extremely fortunate and is the reason the town has been able to support our fiscal year '21 budget. However, one can read the news from across the state to see that not all towns and school districts are in a similar position. So a quick digression might help remind folks why this is true for Falmouth. The town of Falmouth typically receives approximately $7 million in Chapter 70 or education aid to help support the $50 million district allocation. It's an important amount, but a relatively low percentage of the total spending on education that the town makes. However, most towns and cities rely on Chapter 70 funding to cover 50% or more of their educational spending. So with the expectations that state aid is going to be cut, it can be impossible for other towns and cities to make up for any reductions in revenue coming from the state. On another front, in municipal school districts like Falmouth, the town has some flexibility in how it funds its various departments. Regional school districts oftentimes have much more formal funding agreements, negotiated agreements, that are across multiple towns or municipalities. And if they are going to be changed, that it's a much more cumbersome process. So the conservative-yet cooperative approach the school department and town have been taking in terms of staffing and budgetary decisions over the past five-plus years have worked, and they will continue to go for a long way towards preventing, preventing, hopefully, significant staffing disruptions as we ride out the economic recession over the next few years. We've always known an economic recession would hit, so we have been planning for several years. So as a reminder, historically, the full impact of deeper economic recessions tend to hit local governments 12 to 18 months after the economic downturn starts. There are a lot of unknowns still out there, but we may remain cautiously optimistic about the Falmouth School Department's ability to maintain services and staffing over the next few years. There has also been a lot of talk about federal support. In addition to our normal entitlement grants that we track annually, there are three new buckets of funding, or in two cases, reimbursements, that we're watching closely. So the school district is working with the town to request reimbursement for allowable COVID-related purchases and costs through the CARES Act and through FEMA. So there's two different reimbursement processes going on at the same time that we're participating in. Any approved reimbursement that is received from these two buckets goes directly back to the town. This is an ongoing process with rounds of submissions. We don't know how many rounds, we don't know how long. There is uncertainty on what will actually be reimbursed and when the town will start to receive this money. So as an example, FEMA money, which tends to be related to storms, damage, and things like that, that can take years to fully get reimbursements up to, back to the town on those. The CARES Act, we believe, that will go a little faster. So just because I'm saying it goes back to the town, that's fine, because new revenue to the town will be beneficial to all departments as we all work together to manage the next few fiscal years. So I'm trying to emphasize that we need to take a long-term approach on this. A third bucket of federal assistance is the ESER Act. And this is funding that will come directly to the school department in a similar manner and sort of similar equation as annual entitlement grants. The district expects to have approximately $370,000 available to spend in fiscal year '21. There are a wide range of allowable costs, but we do need to recognize this, and it needs to be viewed as a one-time grant. The process for even applying for that is just getting started at the end of the month. We have through August to apply for that. But that would be, help us to, help us out in fiscal year '21, and in theory, it could be extended beyond fiscal year '21 to some extent. So I'm gonna just cover the few fiscal years now, so just give you a little bit of update. Fiscal year '20, so that's the year we are in now that technically closes June 30th. So it's a very long fiscal year closeout process for the local budget. But our fiscal year '20 financial status is fine and has been fine since March, because the revenue that we were expecting to see from the state and the town continued to come in. We are seeing reduced costs in some lines, like utilities and transportation, and increased costs in other lines, clearly PPE purchases, cleaning supply purchases, those types of things. We are following the normal end-of-the-year processes that include communicating with the principals, the superintendent, and the town. So fiscal year '21, that, that was the big concern, right? So finally, we do have the town budget passed, and that was a, that is, we're very, very thankful for that. However, the state budget hasn't actually been passed, and we're thinking, what we're hearing is that they're, they're going to be doing partial state budgets, like 1/12 budgets. But in addition to sort of local revenue and state budgets, we're also looking and having to recognize that resources from other state or federal funds could be negatively impacted over the next fiscal year, or something new and unforeseen may require us to reprioritize resources. So we're looking to create wiggle room, right, to create and be able to To create and be able to respond to whatever the state puts out for us. So we're attempting to be proactive and making sure the school district can respond to those challenges as they come up. And we're doing things to leverage our circuit breaker funding, to make sure that food service remains stable. Anything that we can think of that could be, become problematic over the next fiscal year, we're trying to do things to mitigate anything that might be coming up. So fiscal year 22, so fiscal year 22 planning will begin this fall. And we're going to need to maintain a cautious outlook for fiscal year 22. It's tough to imagine that a fiscal year 22 budget that does not require some level of belt tightening and fiscal constraints. Now, we're going to begin to plan for fiscal year 22, but we really won't receive significant guidance from the town and the state until late in December or January, I would suspect. So our planning will be, will be important and we'll need to create options for ourselves. Let's see. I think I'm going to just end it here and ask the school committee to think about what I've said and just, I think prioritize your work in helping us to think about strategies for the long term, for fiscal year 22. That's probably the most important thought process and strategic thinking that we can focus on as a, as a school committee. Because guess what? There's nobody who truly knows what's going to happen a year, a year and a half, two years out. So I'm going to leave it with that. And again, if you go home tonight or you're already home and think of questions, please, please do reach out to me tomorrow or the next day and we can talk in more detail about things.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. I think that's really helpful because I think that people don't realize how lucky we are that we are not in the same predicament that so many districts are. And I think people just thought, well, they're not talking about it. They're not planning. They're, they're not, you know, they're going to be unprepared. In reality, our situation is just so different from so many districts. So I think it's really helpful to let, let them know we're on it. We just don't have to worry yet. Well, we worry. We don't really worry yet.
I guarantee you I've been worrying.
I'm sure you have. Were there any questions for Patrick? Thank you so much.
All right.
And so we have acting on declassifying our executive session minutes. So you'll remember that in executive session, we review, approve, and then choose to release our executive session minutes and then we do it again in public. So there are two sets, one from June 25th and another set from October 22nd that we have already reviewed in executive session and made and approved for release in executive session. We just need to do it in open session. So is there a motion to do so? Oh, sorry. I wasn't looking at the screen. Terry made a motion. Melissa, are you seconding? Thank you. Is there any comments or questions, discussion? Melissa?
So I have some edits on the executive session from February 11th, page two.
So not, we can't talk about that one in open session. So February, we're just doing the June 25th and October 22nd, because those are the ones we've already approved in executive session. I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Those ones are still confidential.
It's like who seconded something anyway. It wasn't anything fancy.
Right. Okay. So any questions just about the release of the minutes from the June 25th and October 22nd?
No.
Okay. Great. So it's a roll call vote. Leah? Sorry, I caught you off guard.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So it passes unanimously and we can declassify those two sets of minutes. Thank you, guys. Next is the school committee operating protocols. Terry, did you have any edits that you wanted to mention? Were there any changes?
I'm not quite sure what John was after and he isn't here to offer an explanation. So the only thing, can I say my opinion?
Sure.
The two things that he wanted next to each other are two different, ones in operating and ones of communications. So I don't believe that they should be moved. Okay?
Okay. Thanks. Did anyone else have any other edits? I know we changed the, we were changing the top to replace the mission. I think we had talked about that last time. Were there any other edits? Did anyone else?
I looked. I didn't see anything. I was just sort of skimming again and I still don't see anything. And I'm with Terry on her last comment about, I feel like it's, they're two different. I understand the spirit of what John wanted to do, but I think that it needs to remain who it is.
Okay. Did anyone want to make any last-minute changes or is everybody all right with the protocols as they stand? Okay. All right. So is there a motion to approve the operating protocols? Natalie, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Andrea, thank you. Last questions, anything? Roll call vote again. Sorry that I switched the order up on you, so I know everyone's confused. I just go in order of my screen. So Leah, you're first.
All right. I have to keep on switching positions here, so, yeah. Leah Palmer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
Lisa, sorry, cut out. Lisa Hart, yes. Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes, so that passes unanimously. All right, great. So we can't sign them. So when we get to all be together, we'll actually put our signatures on them unless Sharon has some magical way of making that happen. We won't worry about it. And so next is acting on the facilities fee schedule. So this, as we talked about at our last meeting, we hadn't updated it in at least 10 years. And although we're not using any of them now, our policy requires that we approve them. So even though we're not going to use them for a while, we can still approve them and they'll be updated. And as we discussed, there was the addition of the, like the use of the turf field. And so those corrections were made. Is there a motion to act, to approve the facilities fee schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the facilities fee schedule.
Andrea, make some motion. Is there a second?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Bill's got it. Sharon, I'm sure you're figuring it all out. Is there any discussion about it? Oh, hold on. Everyone just disappeared from my screen. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion about the fee schedule? Okay. It's a roll call vote again. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So it passes unanimously again. Thank you so much. And now we can not think about that for a few more years. All set. Next up, we have acting on the school physician consultant appointment. Lori, did you want to speak to this or do you want me to wing it?
Well, I will actually turn that over to Dr. Woodward.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, John.
Thank you, Chairwoman Welch. Yes, we would like to put forward Dr. Greg Parkinson for the 2020-2021 school year as the Falmouth Public Schools School Physician Consultant. And tonight, we ask that you act upon that.
Wonderful. And so you may remember, we've done this in the past and this, can you just tell everyone what the school physician actually does?
Certainly. So Dr. Parkinson is our, is our current school physician and our school physician consultant. Dr. Parkinson works with the administrative team, with the nurse coordinator and our nursing departments. We have eight nurses within the Falmouth Public Schools. And he advises us on any kind of student issues that we have in our planning. He's been very instrumental in helping us with, you know, our work through, kind of getting through this COVID-19 remotely, but also with our plans as we move forward into reentry. He will help us on decision-making processes in policies, working with us to make sure that we have the appropriate, any professional development. He would work with the nurse coordinator and myself, making sure that he's providing the input into that, input into our practices within that. He also sits on, we have a monthly nurse department meeting and he is present and sits on those meetings with us. He also is an active member and sits on our wellness committee with the school district. So he is an invaluable resource for the Falmouth Public Schools and the health and wellness of our students in the district. And we are thankful for his work and feel very fortunate to have him as a consultant to the school district.
Especially right now.
Especially right now.
Are there any, are there any questions about the physician appointment? Or I think Dr. Parkinson has actually joined us.
Yes, he is here with you.
His hand up too.
Yes, his hand up. So.
Okay, great. So how do we?
Mike, can you elevate him to our space? Hello, Dr. Parkinson?
There he is. Here he comes. So Dr. Parkinson, I think you should be, there you are. Great. Hi. Did you have something you wanted to add about your responsibilities or? You're muted.
Just wanted, there is this little health thing going on and I didn't know if the school committee had any, any questions or anything that they wanted to ask, you know, in relation to that.
Thank you so much for offering. That's very kind of you. Anyone have any COVID questions for Dr. Parkinson? I think we're good.
Yeah, there's more, there's more questions than answers right now, as I'm sure you all know better than I do, especially as it changes to the schools. So hopefully, we will at some point have clarity and can get to the work of doing whatever it is we're going to be doing to try to get the kids and the staff safe.
That's the plan, although in the meantime, we're just trying to be patient.
Right.
So thank you, thank you for taking time to join us tonight and for all you're doing for the district. Is there a motion to approve the school physician consultant appointment? Melissa, and is there a second?
I'd like to make a motion.
I thought you might. Andrea is seconding. And is there any last questions or comments? Great. It's a roll call vote again. Well, everyone moved on my screen. Oh, my goodness. We'll start with Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill? Oh, no. There's another bill. Why is there two bills? And I'm also a yes, so it passes unanimously. So thank you so much. Thanks again, Dr. Parkinson, for joining us for the next school year.
Thank you. Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Parkinson.
Bill, I almost had you vote twice. And so next is.
Vote's out of that then, didn't we?
Next is approving the minutes from our June 9th meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
And a second. Melissa, thanks. Any questions or comments, any changes or anything? Melissa?
On the first page, all the way down the bottom, heard superintendent do our on the report of the following. In the number one, are we 100% at any of the schools? Because I thought that we still had students in some schools that we weren't even able to reach out to. And that, I definitely don't want to split hairs. I just want to make sure that the minutes reflect the conversation because I don't have that written. And I wrote everything out the last meeting because my printer was having trouble. So I wanted to be able to report back to it.
So Melissa, for that opportunity, we are not at 100% engagement with every school. Some are very small at, you know, one or two. And we do have, as the ages go up, there are a little bit more. But it's very, it is a small number, but we don't have 100%. You're correct.
Okay. We can adjust the minutes to reflect that edit.
And so, so maybe having it say the engagement of students at some of the schools, at the schools vary, because that's probably more accurate.
I think that's better. Lori, how do you feel about that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's change it to that. So it just says that the participation, engagement of students varies because that was my takeaway as well at the meeting was that some schools and some kids are very engaged in some classes and not as engaged in other classes, that it's sort of a mixed bag with some, you know, with the kids across the district, which is what I think people would expect. So that seems to be accurate.
Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Is there anything else in that set of minutes? Okay, so now is approval of the minutes without one edit and a roll call vote. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes, so it's unanimous. Great. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Next, we have a report from the chair. I have a couple of quick things. One is that we had talked last time about people's desire to have some of our workshop dates coincide with school committee meetings. So if you can, I'll send this in an email as well, so you have it in writing. But if you can hold July 28th, it's a school committee meeting night and we will plan on doing our retreat beforehand, starting hopefully at four, which I know is really hard for people that work. So hopefully, we can make that work since we have some notice. And related to that, if you can send me some topics that you think we should talk about at the retreat, you know, whatever they might be, this is our opportunity to take them on. And I will tell you right now that one of the things I would like us to talk about is race and what that looks like in the schools and for us to spend some time talking about that. So if you have any thoughts on how we can organize that conversation, that would be really helpful. Or if we wanted to bring in anything, anyone for trainings or workshop, think educational things that we want to know about, that would be really great too. Because we don't have a lot of time to organize that, but I want to make sure everybody has a chance to have input on what the retreat agenda looks like. That was the only thing that I had for an update. Does any other committee member have any meeting, committee meeting updates? Melissa, what you got?
I don't really have a committee meeting update. I just want to circle back on the, on our retreat. I feel like every year it gets shorter and shorter and every year we say that we need more time, more than one. If memory serves, I remember doing it for almost an entire day, like the day before the road race. So I, I feel like we're totally contradicting ourselves by not offering, allowing each of ourselves more time. This is a really important time for the committee, especially this year, like ridiculous, so many things that we need to touch base and have conversations on. And I, I really, I appreciate work. I get it. I work full-time. And I, I really, I appreciate work. I get it. I work full-time, out of the house. But I, I, can we do more? Can we do better?
That's, it's very fair. And you're right, historically, the retreat used to be almost an entire day.
Leah brought peaches.
I feel like that, like I'm not making it up, you know, like. No, it was a long, it was a long event. And it, you're right, it has, it has sort of been abbreviated and abbreviated over the years. And we do frequently say we need more than one and haven't followed up on that. So, so why don't we do this? Why don't everyone start thinking about the things that they would like us to address, not just in this retreat, but maybe in a future one? And we can start piecing together not just this retreat, but maybe one that follows it. Because the timing is going to be an issue, of course. Like, we're not going to be able to do everything, get people that we want to come in, people who can present and teach us things and what we need to know. Leah?
Kelly, I know we're not going to be in a discussion about this, but I do think that we should do cultural responsiveness, anti-bias, racism training. And I think that that is going to involve a whole day in the minimum. But as a school committee, it's so critical in us moving forward. And so I, I think that, I think it's so important for so many aspects of what's going on with education right now when we're looking at inequities, inaccessibility. And so I just, I'm just going to voice this right here. I think that that is probably the most critical thing that we need to do as a school committee right now. So.
Great. Thank you. Terry?
Last night at the town meeting, there was a discussion of the, Lori, what was the title of that position?
Affirmative Action?
Affirmative Action Diversity Coordinator?
Diversity Coordinator.
Yes. And I was thinking that our school district, I think, is ripe for that because we have the No Guff, which isn't race-related, but it's a philosophy of, you know, thinking of the other people. And we are the No Place For Hate Town in Falmouth. So we have some seeds. And I think Laura Peterson made a wonderful comment at the meeting that those things are there, but it's up to us to carry them out and everything. So I think we have the seeds planted and I, I'm just proud that we're in Falmouth where we do already have those seeds planted and to move forward with them. So I don't know. Put that on our agenda to talk about along with what Leah said?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. And I think also, I don't know if we need to, but will we need to approve the creation of that position since it's halftime in the school district? So maybe that's a future agenda item, if that's something we need.
We do need to approve that. So I, I wonder, do we need to also create a job description? Or is the job description come from Article 31? Like how?
So, Lori, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So there are parts of that job description that we started. And actually, we, as a administrative team, was a part of helping develop that job description. So what we need to do is, next step is we plan on working with Julian Susso and Jen Mueller. And just what are the next steps in the process? But we're ready to get moving because we, we talked about it this morning. So we'll create that job description and we will take whatever next steps we, we need to, to have that posted and jointly move forward with, with the town on this. So.
And then if we have to approve it, we'll just get it on an agenda?
Well, I will, yes, we'll definitely put it on the next agenda. I think it'll probably take us two weeks to, you know, to be able to, to get that together. So.
Sure.
Yep.
Great. Are there any other subcommittee reports or committee, committee member items? Okay. So barring none, we will move into executive session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requires specifically the open meeting law GLC 30A, Sections 22, F and G, as well as executive session to conduct strategy and preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel, the principals, and conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent. It's anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And it's a roll call vote again. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cantolopoulos, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. It's unanimous. So we will see you in executive session. You should have the link in that email from Sharon.